Ladies and gentlemen, fellow Christians, my dear brothers and sisters, devoted and committed family members of the St Luke Methodist Church. I bring to you warm Christian greetings from my family. We need to confess as a family, we need to confess how we miss you. How I really miss our physical engagement, the beautiful smiles on your faces, the kisses and the hugs. How I miss the church buildings and the environment of 43 Cosmos Avenue. But you know what? I'm trying very hard, I'm trying very hard not to miss the fellowship with you. We meet again in one of the good evenings, the Bible study session on Wednesdays. [speaking Hebrew] Great, majestic, immeasurable, holy, eternal Creator, Redeemer and Comforter, you are holy. You are holy. You are holy Lord God of heaven and earth. Heaven and earth are full of your glory. The archangels, the seraphs and the cherubims, the hosts of the heavenly servants, kneel and bow with reverence before your throne of grace and mercy. We take this opportunity to come before you and to come before your mercy seat with humility and respect. Loving and forgiving Father, we know that we are not worthy to gather up the crumbs under your table. But on your grace and on your mercy, we all depend. We thank you for a time of reflection, but also a time of projection and envisioning. We thank you for love, we thank you for food and the fellowship, especially during this difficult time of lockdown here in South Africa and throughout the entire Methodist connection and the world elsewhere. We thank you for the spirit of good health and healing. We thank you for the technology of television, radio, cell phones, the internet, emails and just every cyber space which allows us to communicate with each other, but also to spread the gospel of Jesus Christ. Holy Spirit of guidance, we invite you to be amongst us as we seek your face. Be with me as the presenter and the teacher of your weed. Be with the audience, the recipients, those watching and listening to this audio and video. Be with us, the St Luke Methodist congregation members, the young and the old, the sick and the healthy, the lonely elderly living in the Helder Crane Old Age Home and the other retirement villages across the length and breadth of Roidipot and Johannesburg within the Hautein province. I pray for the anxious workers who may potentially be retrained from their places of employment as a result of the economic meltdown due to COVID-19. I pray for those who are offering essential services during the lockdown. I pray for those who are actually on the front line of the battle against the coronavirus, the doctors, the nurses, the farmers, the working laboratories, those who are screening and testing and assessing the level and the spread of the virus. Thank you Father for the kind of leadership we have in the President Cyril Ramaphosa and his cabinet. We thank you for the unity and oneness of the politicians during this difficult time. We also bring before you the gradual easing process of the lockdown from level five to level four. We pray for all those who will be going back to work after the first of May. Our special prayers are with the school-going children and the parents. Some of them not to sit for their grade 12 examination towards the end of this year, whilst others are hopefuls, hopeful to graduate in various universities next year. We ask all these in the wonderful name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. We ask all these in the name of the resurrected Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen. Our Father, who art in heaven, Hail Lord be thy name, thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power and the glory forever and ever. Amen. Friends, we find our scripture reading this evening from the Gospel of Jesus Christ according to St John and we read chapter 21 from verse 1, John 21 from verse 1, and it reads as follows: "After these things Jesus showed himself again to the disciples by the sea of Tiberias, and he showed himself in this way: Gathered there together was Simon Peter, Thomas called the twin Nathaniel of Cana in Galilee, the sons of Zebedee, and two others of his disciples. Simon Peter said to them, 'I am going fishing.' They said to him, 'We will go with you.' They went out and got into the boat, but that night they caught nothing. Just after daybreak Jesus stood on the beach, but the disciples did not know that it was Jesus. Jesus said to them, 'Children, have you no fish? Have you?' They answered, 'No.' He said to them, 'Cast the net on the right side of the boat and you will find some.' So they cast it, and now they were not able to hold it, to hold it in because there were so many fish. That disciple whom Jesus loved said to Peter, 'It is the Lord.' When Simon Peter heard that it was the Lord, he put on some clothes, for he was naked, and jumped into the sea. But the other disciples came in the boat, dragging the net full of fish, for they were not far from the land, only about hundred yards off. When they had gone ashore, they saw a charcoal fire there with fish on it and bread. Jesus said to them, 'Bring some of the fish that you had just caught.' So Simon Peter went aboard and hauled the net ashore full of large fish, a hundred and fifty-three of them, and though there were so many, the net was not torn. Jesus said to them, 'Come and have breakfast.' Now none of the disciples dared to ask him, 'Who are you?' Because they knew it was the Lord. Jesus came and took the bread and gave it to them, and did the same with the fish. This was now the third time that Jesus appeared to the disciples after he was raised from the dead. Friends, this is the word of the Lord to the people of God. The theme for our teaching this evening is the provisioning and renewing power of resurrection. The provisioning and renewing power of the resurrection. There are a few points that I want us to take note of before we can delve deeply into the teaching this evening. The author of the part of scripture that we have read is John, the disciple and the apostle of Jesus Christ. The author is the one who is from time to time referred to as the beloved disciple of Jesus Christ. The author, my friends, is the son of Zebedee, a Jew writing to the Jews. And the purpose for each and every section, each and every story, each and every newspaper has a purpose and the reason why it was written. So the purpose of writing this gospel is found in John chapter 20, verses 30 to 31. And it says, "That you may believe." "That you may believe." Now, a little bit about John. John's efforts were aimed at helping the fellow Jews to see Jesus Christ as the promised Messiah. His intention was for the fellow Jews to see Jesus Christ as God incarnate, God in flesh. So chapter 21, the one that we have read here, in the biblical circles is regarded as the concluding testament. It is regarded as the great commission. Now for some of us, the great commission would be Matthew chapter 28, yes, it's true. But you look at each and every gospel, there is the concluding statement which has everything about the sending of those who lived and walked and journeyed with Jesus Christ. And that part where he instructs them, it is referred to as the great commission. As you can see, from Matthew 28, verses 18 to 20, Mark 16, verses 15 to 20, but also Luke 24, verse 46 to 49. The word commissioning simply means being officially sent. Now, as I said, before we can go deep into, I want to see the circumstances surrounding the revelation and the appearance of Jesus Christ in this instance. When you read Luke chapter 24, you will hear and understand that two of the disciples were on their way to Emmaus, and Jesus appeared to them and they did not know him. So the disciples are no longer together, because two of them are on their way to Emmaus. The other one, of course, Judas Iscariot has hanged himself, so says the Bible. Simon Peter, from the seven that were left there. Simon Peter, the chief apostle, Thomas, the doubting one, Nathaniel, who is also regarded as the honest one, the sons of Zebedee, and I want to assume that you know who they are, but for the purposes of those who do not know them, the sons of Zebedee we're referring to James and John. They were sometimes called the sons of thunder because of their anger, their attitude, their character, and two others. And the Bible does not tell us who were the other two. But in the mentioning of the list of those who were there, the author, John, begins with Simon Peter, and he calls him Simon Peter. Why does he start with Simon Peter? He is the chief apostle, he is the leader of the team, the leader of the disciples. Now, Simon Peter is constantly referred to as Simon Peter. Now, like most of us, we have got two or three names, I have three at least, you know? And I'm not going to tell you my other name. But Simon is his original Jewish name. A name he was known by pre-repentance, he was just called Simon. And later on, after his encounter with Jesus Christ, he is now referred to as Peter, which is of course a Greek name, meaning the rock. Now, there are times in the Bible where Simon Peter was referred to as just Simon. And there are places in the Bible where he is sometimes referred to as Peter, and there are places where he is referred to as Simon Peter, both names are used. And if you're observant enough, go back to your Bible and look right through scripture. He is called Simon each time he commits a sin of some sort. Each time he falters, each time he makes a mistake, then he's referred to as Simon. But when he does something good, he is referred to as Peter. And I've said that is his Greek name, which means the rock. So when he does good, he's the rock, the strong one, the good one. But when the Bible refers to Peter or Simon using two names, using Simon Peter, that in itself speaks volumes. What does it mean? It means he is in two places at the same time. He is his old self, but he is also his new self. He is Simon, the one who didn't know Jesus Christ. But he is also Peter, the one who repented and knows Jesus Christ, who has come to accept Jesus Christ as his Lord and his Savior. So each time the Bible refers to Simon Peter as Simon Peter, then the meaning thereof is he is in two places at the same time. And I believe this is the case with most of us. We are Christians on Sunday, or when we meet for our grace group, and we are something else at work, we are something else within the community. And that cannot be so. We can't be your old self and be a new person. Again, a little bit about Peter, you know, you need to know and understand yourself. Simon Peter is an influential, very influential leader, the outspoken one, the extrovert of the group, the self-assertive one. And each time it is Simon Peter who would jump and say, "You are the Christ, the son of the living God," it is Peter. It is Peter who would jump and say, "If it is you, Lord, call me, let me come to you." That is the assertive one, the extrovert, the outspoken one. Now look at the irresponsibility of this outspoken, extrovert and self-assertive leader of the disciples, the chief apostle, this is what he says. And this is what most of us go through as leaders within the church and the community. Peter says, "I'm going fishing." And all of the followers say, "We will go with you." Now, as a leader, I want to advise you, as a leader who knows and understands themselves, you need to be careful, you need to know whether it's in a meeting situation or you need to know when to speak and when not to speak. You need to understand the influence that you have. Unlike Peter here, he did not even understand his own influence. They were supposed to be sitting somewhere in the upper room together as disciples, and he goes on and says, "I'm going fishing." Now maybe Peter can defend himself and say, "I never said they should come with me. I just said, 'I am going fishing.'" But however, as a true leader, you need to understand the influence that you have on others. And they went, and that night, that night the Bible says they caught nothing. And at daybreak, Jesus Christ stood at the shore, and he says, "Children, have you no fish? Have you?" And they said, "No." And I was deliberate, I was very intentional in using the Bible version that calls or that says, "Children, you have no fish, have you?" Because other versions say something different. Now, I chose this one because this is how God sees us. When we, when we live doing things that we were supposed to do and do things that we are not supposed to do, the Lord Jesus Christ, God in Jesus Christ, refers to us as children. For our behavior is a behavior of children. And he comes there, old as they are, with all the experience, with all the education and everything, he calls them children, for he knows that they were supposed to be together praying and worshiping and perhaps reflecting upon what happened over Good Friday and what that means for them. But then Peter says, "I'm going fishing," and everybody just says, "I'm going with you." And the others are saying, "I would rather go home to Emmaus." And the other one decides, "I would rather kill myself." That's where we are at. So when the Lord comes and finds you having done what you were not supposed to do, let me tell you, my friend, Jesus refers to you as a child. It doesn't matter your age. That's why he stood there and said to them, "Children, you have no fish, have you?" And they answered, "No." And then he says, "Out of his grace, out of his love..." And I said to you the other day that grace is the love that we do not deserve. But however, God continues to give us and to provide that love for us. Then out of his grace, he says, "Cast the net to the right of the boat." "Cast the net to the right of the boat." And that can also be interpreted in other ways. "Cast the net to the right of the boat." Who knows, it might also mean that for the whole night you have been casting your nets on the wrong side of the boat. So now that I am here, "Cast your nets on the right side of the boat, for you have cast your nets for the whole night on the wrong side." And it may also mean on the left side. They were not able to pull the net. And the disciple whom Jesus loved again says, "It is the Lord." And when Simon Peter heard that it was the Lord, he put on some clothes, for he was naked, and he jumped into the water. Now, if I had time, I would just hold on to that thought of a person who jumps, who puts on his clothes and jumps into the water. I don't understand the logic there, because really, if Peter wanted to swim, he would have taken his clothes off and jumped into the water. You don't put on your clothes and dive into the water, you don't do that. But however, it is something that we can talk about on another time. So he jumped into the water with his clothes on noch al. So the others came in the boat, dragging the fish. Now this is the appearance. They saw the charcoal fire with the fish and the bread. And Jesus Christ says to them, "Bring some of the fish you have just caught." You know, the Lord does not want the fish and the bread that was prepared yesterday. It's "Bring some of the fish you have just caught, bring fresh fish and fresh bread." The Lord is not pleased by the old food, but he wants fresh food for his people. So Simon Peter went aboard and hauled the net full of 153 of them. Now, for a moment, let me deal with the 153 fishes, or fish that were there, let me deal with it. Initially, and all the other gospels are saying, "The net was full of fish, big fish, and there were many." But then at a point where Jesus says, "Bring some of the fish you have just caught," it is Peter again who jumps and goes into the boat and pulls the net. How do we know the number of fish? I suspect, and I want to suspect, I want to suspect that due to the wrong things that he did, remember, he has just been told by the one whom Jesus loved, by John, that it is the Lord. It must have, it must have crossed his mind to say, "I was the one who said, 'Lord, I will die with you.'" And some few hours later, he denied Jesus, not once, not twice, but three times. Before the cock could crow, Peter had already said, "I don't know this person," and he swears. It might, it might have crossed his mind to say, "Jesus trusted me so much, and I am the one who acted irresponsibly, I am the one who suggested to the others that I'm going fishing. They came following me." And he stood there when Jesus says, "Bring the fish." My suspicion, my friends, is that he is the one, as if it was not enough for the sentence, "The fish were many." As if that was not enough, he stands, he cannot come when Jesus says, "Come, let us have breakfast." He takes, he whiles away time, he counts the fish, I suspect. He is the one who knows how many fish were there, for he started the act of counting them. He couldn't bring himself to run to Jesus like all the others, for he was calling. And Jesus said, "Come, let us have breakfast." The provisioner, the one who cares for us, he calls us, "Come, let us have breakfast." In spite of your irresponsibility, in spite of the wrong things that you did, "Come, let us have breakfast." And my Bible says, "Nobody asked, they knew that it was the Lord." So at the table of revelation, and I wish to call it that, at the table of revelation, that's where Jesus appears, reveals himself. And you must be familiar with the words, "He took the bread, he gave thanks, and he broke it." This is what we say is time we come to the holy table, to the holy communion table. And this is what he does again this morning, took the bread, gave thanks, and he broke it. The providing Jesus Christ, the provisioning Jesus Christ, this act reminds us of the 5,000 who were fed by Christ, two loaves and two fish. This act should also remind those who went to Emmaus that as they sat at the table, he took bread, he gave thanks, he broke it, and he gave it to them, and it is at that point of time that their eyes were opened. and he gave it to them. And it is at that point of time that their eyes were opened. This act should also remind the disciples of Thursday night, the Monday, Thursday, the Tenebrae evening. And, and our liturgy for, for the Eucharist, for the Holy Communion says, "On the night he was betrayed, he took bread and he gave thanks." And then John concludes the story by saying, "It was the third time that Jesus appeared to his disciples." So John's consistency, it says that God has revealed God's self. It was for the third time. And if you ask me, theologically, that means God in Jesus Christ has revealed God's self three times, meaning God the Father, God the Son, God the Holy Spirit. Three times, John records, that he revealed himself. All of God revealed God's self. And may the Lord bless you, as you begin to understand that he is alive. God has created you. God has forgiven and restored you. God is now giving you a second chance. He goes back to the lake of Tiberias where he called them for the first time, and they went back there. He's giving you a second chance. He calls you again. And I want to say to you, with God walking in front of us, the future is full of hope. The future is as bright as the morning sun. Because God in Jesus Christ instructs us, "Come and have breakfast. Come, follow me." May the Lord bless you, as you begin to understand his dictates and follow Christ. Amen. Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for the time well spent. We want to thank you for the spirit of guidance, the spirit of revelation, the spirit that has revealed you, not once, not twice, but three times. The spirit that says to us, "You are alive and you continue to live." I bring before you the San Luke membership. I bring before you the young and the old, the healthy and the sick. Bind us, Lord, with cords of love. Bind us with cords that cannot be broken. Shower us with your blessing during this difficult time. Unite us as a church, so that even when we come to a point of the lifting of the lockdown, we are going to remain a united church. We pray for the families. We pray for the grandchildren. We pray for all our relatives and family members who are very far. We ask that your spirit be upon them. You protect them continuously. We ask all these in the name of my Lord and my Savior Jesus Christ, the one who has taught us. And now, may the grace of our Lord Jesus Christ, the love of God, and the fellowship of the Holy Spirit rest and abide with all of us now and forever. Amen.